Good morning, everyone. My name is Elliot Payne. I'm the president of Minneapolis City Council, and I'm going to call this regular meeting of the city council for February 13th to order. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Cashman.
Present.
Councilmember Osmond.
Present.
Councilmember Rainville.
Present.
Councilmember Chavez.
Present.
Councilmember Vitak.
Present.
Councilmember Ellison is absent. Councilmember Kosky.
Present.
Councilmember Wansley.
Present.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Present.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Present.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Present.
Vice President Chuck Tai.
Present.
President Payne.
Present.
There are 12 members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. Before we begin the meeting, I want to offer a friendly reminder to all members and staff that this meeting is broadcast live to enable greater public participation. The broadcast includes real-time captioning as a further method to increase the accessibility of our proceedings to the community. Therefore, all speakers need to be mindful of the rate of their speech so that our captioners can fully capture and transcribe all comments for the broadcast. We ask all speakers to moderate the speed and clarity of their comments. Additionally, I will note as a general advisory that the rules of the city council do not provide for public comment to be made at meetings of the full council. The purpose of council meetings is to conduct the business of the city. It is not a public forum for public comments. Meetings are open to the public for observance only, as required under the Minnesota Open Meetings Law. Consistent with council rules, those who disturb these proceedings and interfere with the ability of the city council to conduct the city's business will be asked to leave. Those who refuse to follow these instructions will be removed from the chamber. I especially want to stress that we have zero tolerance for any comments directed at any specific religion, race, gender, or sexual identity. With that, the agenda for today's meeting is before us. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, hopefully, members will find at their desk. On your behalf, the clerk's office has put forward a motion to amend the agenda to include, under the order of new business -- oh, I'm sorry, notice of ordinances -- an introduction of a subject matter related to the Community Commission on Police Oversight, specifically to the membership of the review panels. Apologies, this was an error on my part not to get this on the agenda, so it's not on the printed agenda, but it is a notice to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance to address the review panels that are staffed by or are used by the Community Commission on Police Oversight for conduct review for police misconduct cases. And I can speak more to that when we get to that item, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Council Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I wanted to move to amend the agenda to include in the order of notice of introductions and notice of intent relating to the Community Commission on Police Oversight Review Panel temporary assignments, as outlined by the clerk.
Is there a second?
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison is absent. Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wansley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins. Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Vice President Chuck Tai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and that motion is added to the agenda. Next, I will recognize Councilmember Cashman.
I've just been told by Clerk Cannon that I can add this on to item nine on the CNI agenda, and I don't need to amend the agenda.
Sounds good. I will then ask for a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
So move.
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison is absent. Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wansley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Vice President Chuck Tai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the agenda is adopted. The next item is acceptance of minutes from our regular meeting of January 30th. I would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
So move.
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wansley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Vice President Chuck Tai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the minutes have been accepted. Finally, we have the referral of petitions, communications, and reports to proper committees. May I have that motion, please?
So move.
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wansley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins. Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Vice President Chuck Tai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and those matters have been referred. The next order of business is presentations of our reports from standing committees. Those are taken in alphabetical order, beginning with the report of our Administration and Enterprise Oversight Committee, which will be presented by its chair, Councilmember Wansley.
Thank you, President Payne. The Administration and Enterprise Oversight Committee is bringing forward 16 items for consideration. The first is a gift acceptance from the Metropolitan Police Department. The second is a gift acceptance from the New Jersey Environmental Health Association. Third is a gift acceptance from Hello Heart of Travel and Lodging. Number four is a bid for Bridge Nine improvements. Number five is contract amendments with senior services providers. Six is contract amendments with Cornerstone Advocacy Service for sexual assault case advocacy services. Seven is a contract amendment with Howes Brokerage, Inc. for hauling and disposal agricultural liming materials. Eight is a contract amendment with Family Tree Clinic for sexual health services for youth. Nine is a contract with Advocates for Better Health as Fiscal Agent for Minneapolis Health Department's Public Health Community Institute. 10 is a legal settlement with Mohammed Shahidullah, the city of Minneapolis. 11 is a joint powers agreement for embedded social worker in Minneapolis Emergency Communications Center. 12 is a legal settlement workers' compensation claim of Ricardo Muro. 13 is a legal settlement workers' compensation claim of Jonathan Petron. And then 14 is a legal settlement workers' compensation claim of Michael Griffin. 15 is a legal settlement workers' compensation claim of Louis Perez. And 16 is a legislative directive related to fire department recruitment. With that, I will move all items for approval and stand for any questions.
Councilmember Wansley has moved approval of the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, President Payne. I'd just like to move items 12 through 15 for a separate vote.
Councilmember Chavez has moved items 12 through 15 for a separate vote. Is there any discussion on the remainder of the items? Councilmember Kosky.
Thank you, Council President Payne. And I just wanted to speak to item number 16 regarding the fire department recruitment. So colleagues before you, it's a staff direction that will guide our Policy and Research Division in conducting a landscape review of municipal fire department recruitment and retention practices. This review will focus specifically on the hiring recruitment of female candidates, examining the challenges, identifying opportunities, and comparing our practices to national best practices. Women remain significantly underrepresented in emergency services, both locally and nationally. As the demands on the field continue to grow and change, it is imperative that we remain proactive, ensuring our workforce is not just capable and well-equipped, but also diverse and reflective of the community that we serve. In 2022, we marked the 30th anniversary of the first all-women crew in the Minneapolis Fire Department. Since then, I've had ongoing conversations with the Minneapolis Women's Firefighter Association about the decline in female representation. It's an issue we see as early as the application process through to hiring. We must change these outcomes. To do that, we need to critically examine the barriers that exist, identifying the opportunities for improvement, and take decisive action to support recruitment and retention. Representation is not just a numbers game. It's about ensuring that every person in our community, regardless of gender, has an equal opportunity to pursue a career in fire services and can see themselves in that role. Across the country, fire departments have successfully implemented innovative strategies to strengthen recruitment, reduce turnover, and build more inclusive workforces. By studying these approaches and assessing how they might apply to our own department, we can ensure that Minneapolis leads the way in building a fire department that truly mirrors the diversity of the people it serves. This is our opportunity to ensure that the work we do today sets a stronger and more inclusive foundation for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I added myself to queue. I wanted to speak on item number 11, the joint powers agreement for the embedded social worker and 911. This is something -- before I ran for city council, I was working on the team that ultimately launched the Behavioral Crisis Response, which has been one of the largest new programs in public safety that has emerged from that body of work. But at the same time that we brought forward recommendations around BCR, we had also brought forward recommendations about embedding a social worker in 911. And it's just really great to start seeing some of those ideas come to fruition and get implemented. We'll be seeing this again under our Budget Committee report for the transfer of funds for that. But it's just really exciting to see how something that started back in 2019 is becoming a reality here today. And with that, seeing no one else in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll on the committee report, except for items 12 through 15.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wansley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins. Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Vice President Chuck Tai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and those items are adopted. Next, we will take up items number 12 through 15. And seeing no one in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
No.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wansley.
Aye. Sorry, nay.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Council -- Vice President Chuck Tai.
Aye. Oh, nay.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 10 ayes and three nays.
That carries, and those items are adopted. I'll also note for the record that we've been joined by Councilmember Ellison. The next report is from our Budget Committee, and that report will be presented by that committee's chair, Vice President Chuck Tai.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget Committee will be bringing four items to today's council meeting. Item number one is approving an appointment to the Capitol Long Range Improvement Committee for Seat Six. Item number two is passage of a resolution for the City Hall project for audiovisual broadcast and captioning equipment for the council chamber. Item number three is passage of a resolution moving funds to the Minneapolis Emergency Communications Center, or 911, to support the joint powers agreement for an embedded social worker. And finally, item number four is considering a resolution approving violence prevention funding for Hennepin County. This item was forwarded without recommendation, so I will move items one through three for approval and set aside item number four for a separate discussion and vote. And I'm happy to make a motion so we can begin discussion on item number four, when that is appropriate.
Vice President Chuck Tai has moved items one through three, and we will take up item four separately. Is there any discussion on items one through three? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wansley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins. Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Vice President Chuck Tai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and those items are adopted. Next, I will recognize Vice President Chuck Tai to speak on item number four.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will move item number four for approval.
Councilmember -- Council Vice President Chuck Tai has moved item number four for approval. Is there any discussion? Is there a second? Any discussion? Councilmember Vitak.
Thank you, Chair. A few things. First, I just want to talk about the item itself. I said earlier this week I'm not going to be supporting this item. First, because I believe this is our work to do as the Minneapolis City Council, and we should not be moving this work to the county. Secondly, I think what we -- by moving this to the county, we're doing the opposite of what I'm hearing from constituents that they want to see. They want to see us doing our work. And this is the second thing on this agenda today where I feel like we're working against what the people of Minneapolis have asked us to do. First thing being George Floyd Square. People have spoken to what they want to see happen, and there's been way too much conversation, in my opinion, against what people are asking for. And that's the same thing with this. I've had an overwhelming amount of people reach out to me and say they want us to do this work. They want -- they elected us to do this work, not us to pass this work on to another government body. And so I'm confident that we can do it. I'm confident in our abilities of leadership. We have a Department of Public Safety that is tasked with doing this work. And if something is happening, then I think the public should know about it. I looked at the presentation again. I read Councilmember Wansley's memo, and there's nothing in there that shows proof of anything. What I read was Councilmember Wansley's personal opinion about what she thinks is happening in the Department of Neighborhood Safety, in particular with this work, and why she thinks this work should be moved to the county. There's no data to support it. There's nothing that says that the Commissioner and his department has done anything wrong. So I can't buy into that because it's just not true. And then I want to add, you know, the other day, the conversation got extremely heated. Reverend McAfee and I, we don't always agree, but I do understand his passion for community and the way he approaches community. It's not always okay, but I get it. I called him after. A lot of times, I talked to him before. I felt a bit of responsibility because I had told him last week that he should speak to the chair and the vice chair of public safety with some of the concerns he had. And when he showed up here, the first thing he said was people weren't returning his calls. Unfortunately, I think we're going to see people infuriated a lot more when folks aren't answering their calls. When people don't return calls, people get upset. And they show up at council meetings, and they express their feelings. And that's what I believe happened Monday, earlier this week, with Reverend McAfee. I personally did not feel threatened by Reverend McAfee, but I have a different relationship with Reverend McAfee. I know for a fact that Reverend McAfee does not know about certain people's sexuality because he told me that. And so to call him homophobic or use words that I don't believe is true, it's not okay. It's happened to me on this council. Leadership on this council has let things get out of hand because they won't call out everybody for wrongdoing. Leadership on this council picks and chooses. I sat here on the dais, actually in City Hall, and was called the N-word. And I watched my colleagues get up and go take photos with the people who called me out of my name. I was personally attacked by people. And majority of my council members, when I asked for additional security, told me that I was trying to stop people from using their First Amendment right to speak. Majority of this council never even checked on me. Councilmember Ellison did. Asked me how I was doing. We had a difference of opinion that day, but he cared more about my safety than anything. But majority of my colleagues didn't care, didn't even address it. To this day, hasn't addressed it. Literally told me that I was trying to stop people from talking by asking for additional security. I have someone stalking me right now. Walked up behind me Tuesday with a pair of scissors. And people are in here making a big deal about someone coming here vocally expressing themselves when they've told me it's okay for people to come into these chambers and say what they want to say.
Lose sight of what's happening here. The issue before us was about money being moved to the county. The council not doing our work and relying on the county to do something that we should be doing. People should be returning Reverend McAfee's calls and anybody else that's reaching out, trying to voice their opinion about the crime that's going on in this city, about the work and the things they're seeing every day in this city, in all parts of this city. Believe me, it's not a North Side thing anymore. It's happening everywhere in this city. And what he's talking about is about everywhere in this city. He sees it, and there's so many more people who see it. And so, we shouldn't lose sight of that. You can't be taking the blame off of what's actually happening here and using the incident and policing everybody's words. There are cultural things that happen. There are things we say culturally that other people don't say. I woke up this morning and I was thinking about how if somebody black called you a bad mama jamma, you're not bad, you're fine, you look good. But to some people, bad means bad. That's not how it works. There are some things, there are language that we use. There's a whole TikTok thing about how white slang is the opposite of black slang. We use words differently. And we gotta give people room to make mistakes. That's the biggest thing. If somebody makes a mistake, give them room to fix it. But I want to make sure that today, that the conversation is not lost in what's before us. And that is, it is our job to do the work of the city of Minneapolis, not to pass it on to another agency.
Councilmember Cashman.
Oh, thank you, President Payne. I'm gonna speak directly on the item that's before us, the considering a resolution to approve funding for Hennebun County for the GVI and YGVI services. And I just want to say that I think, as a member of the Administration Enterprise Oversight Committee, I think it's right that we, as a council, are sounding the alarm about the Neighborhood Safety Department. We've just lost a new director. We do not have a position filled for GVI and YGVI. Almost half of the positions in this department are vacant right now. And so, it is our job as council members to provide oversight over this department and to say, hey, something's not working, what's not working here? And when we look over to the county, we see experts in YGVI, people who actually built the YGVI and GVI departments here at the city are working over there. So I think it is worth sounding the alarm, and I think that's something that we all agree on here, that there needs to be more work from the Office of Community Safety and with council and with the mayor's office to develop this department and to make sure it's successful. But all that being said, I had a chance to talk again with the deputy director of NSD this week and a procurement leader from the department. And I really see that all of the Violence Prevention programming that we have at the city, it fits together, it works together, it's part of integrated strategies. And I'm worried that if we just try to take out one Jenga piece, which is GVI and YGVI, and pass that over to the county, that the puzzle might all fall. And I can't support taking out that piece. I'm not gonna be supporting the motion that was brought forward here today. And I think that we should recommit ourselves to working with the department and working with the staff that we have here at the city and rebuilding the capacity of NSD.
Vice President Chuck Tai.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we've been discussing this item, I think a lot has unfolded, especially since our Budget Committee meeting on Monday afternoon. I would imagine this is true for colleagues, but I know I have received hundreds of form-generated emails, you know, repeating allegations of wrongdoing and questioning the integrity and motivations of our members as it relates to this item. I hope we can all agree that this is a really serious matter. So to make sure I have all the information, I need to take a vote on this item today. I just had a few questions for Commissioner Barnett, if that's amenable.
Commissioner Barnett.
Good morning.
Good morning, welcome. Thank you for being here today, Commissioner. Before the Budget Committee meeting on Monday, and again, I'm just trying to understand, you know, I believe this is a really serious matter, so just trying to get some more information so that I have all the information I need. The body has all the information we need, the public has all the information they need to continue discussing this matter. So before the Budget Committee meeting on Monday, I understand you held a press conference here at the Public Service Center regarding this item. And during that press conference, you stated that, and I'm quoting here, "Unfortunately, several council members chose only to support the efforts that would benefit them or their favorite nonprofit. The selective and self-serving approach not only hampers the integrity of the work, but also undermines the important progress being made by our Neighborhood Safety Department." And then, when asked by a reporter if you were implying that council members, or particularly Councilmember Wansley, were trying to move this money to benefit their favorite nonprofits, you responded with, "I say, look at all the facts." So I'm trying to understand the facts and trying to understand which council members this might be about. I'm wondering if you can just briefly name which council members you might have been referring to. Commissioner.
Good morning, Chair Chuck Tai. Here's what I will start with. I got here in October of 2023. At that time, I started working with Director Nelson Brown. About November or December of 2023, during the budget amendments, I was before council. And at that time, money was being moved to Neighborhood Safety. And I said at that time, let Neighborhood Safety build capacity. We gotta build the infrastructure. And as we moved along, we improved the invoicing process. As we moved along, we improved the RFP process, took out bias. As we moved along, we improved the procurement process.
Commissioner, I really apologize. I'm sorry to interrupt you. My question was, can you tell me which council members you were referring to in the comments?
Chair Chuck Tai, I'm getting to that. And I'm explaining all the facts.
No, I just want to know which council members you were referring to. It's okay if you don't want to answer the question, I can move on to the next one.
I am trying to lay out the facts of where we are.
But my question was...
I hear your question, but I'm laying out the facts.
Do you want to answer my question?
I like to lay out the facts to answer your question.
Okay.
As we moved along, several of us, meaning council members, the mayor, myself, were getting contacted by community organizations, community members, and they were frustrated. And they were frustrated because they were saying they weren't getting paid. And every time someone asked me about it in an individual group, you look at it, we went back to hear the criteria that we use for invoicing. If there's something wrong with the documentation, we're not gonna pay you. That was where we were, we were setting expectations. While we were doing that, council members continued to say, what's going on with Neighborhood Safety? As we're building it, we got to getting the infrastructure in place, reclassifying positions.
Commissioner, I'm nearly out of time, so I just want to like move on, I suppose, to the next question. I don't think...
I'm gonna lay out all the facts. I said, follow the facts, I'm laying out the facts.
But that wasn't the question I asked you. I asked you for specific council members. I understand that that's not an answer that I'm going to receive here today or this body will receive here today. So, in an interview with KSTP that was published on Monday evening of this week, and I'm quoting the article explicitly here, you said, "Unfortunately, several council members chose only to support the efforts that would benefit them or their favorite nonprofit." Further, in a Star Tribune op-ed you authored also later on Monday, you stated, and again, I'm quoting directly, "It is an understatement to say that offloading an entire line of business to the county simply because some council members don't like who was selected undermines all oversight and accountability at the city." So, I'm wondering, can you provide any evidence or share with us what information you have that I don't have or this body doesn't have, clearly, that led you to make this very serious allegation of unnamed members?
You're at time.
Thank you.
We'll have to move on to Councilmember Paul Masano. You can get, it looks like you're back in queue.
Mr. Chair, I didn't want to interrupt in the middle there, but point of order, Mr. Chair, is the cross-examination of the commissioner here to make a political point? Is the point to attempt to demean or harass professional staff here today? It seems to me there's no purpose behind this line of questioning, except to put the commissioner in a difficult position. So, I suggest we get to the notion that Vice President put on the floor for us. This isn't debate, she doesn't even seem to give the commissioner time to respond.
So, you're ascribing motive. It seemed to me that there was a direct question around...
That was not relevant to the debate on the floor here and the decision that we are making today.
We're talking about the move of funds from the city to the county to oversee certain programming.
And she's making a personal accusation at the commissioner.
No, we're trying to understand the accusations around the motivation of those moves.
So, let me continue. I'll first need to look at what I said at committee in a summarized way. "We have a department and a previous department leader, Luana Nelson Brown, who stood her ground and refused to pay invoices without documentation. That should be commended, not villainized. Upon settlement of the Coppola lawsuit, they worked hard to meet or exceed all requirements of rigor, removal of bias, and creation of a system to help support vendors and the creation of a new request for proposal, with blind review of the proposals and further management of the contracts." To me, that's commendable, to me, we're ready to move forward. But even if you believe that we need more time for reform, even if you believe that we have overwhelmed leadership, even if you believe there would be no additional cost to recreate this effort over across the street at the county, even if you disagree with me and the minority of others on this dais, you must know, this would negatively impact all violence interruption, all GVI and YGVI work. There would be a large gap in service, at least. In fact, it would guarantee that this critical GVI and YGVI work cannot continue. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the time. Honestly, I'm a little bit at a loss for the words at this moment. First off, I just, I guess, want to start off by apologizing to the public because the amount of misinformation and disinformation that is just swirling around in our chambers and through the media has been untenable. I just do not believe the public is getting the accurate information about what's going on here. And I do believe if we're having a discussion about funding, a debatable policy item, a policy discussion about moving GVI and YGVI funding to the county, which is a reputable organization that does this work and has robust contracting and accountability tools and mechanisms, it's a policy discussion we should be having. But however, if the commissioner of Public Safety is going to make statements accusing council members of enriching themselves, or picking nonprofits, or moving things out of their own interests, that is something that should be questioned, we should discuss. Because as a council member, I don't know if he's speaking about me or not. And I can say for a fact, I spent time with the commissioner and members of our Neighborhood Safety Department at the budget process, talking to them about why safety in the Hiawatha neighborhood was important, and we talked about how we would work together. And I figured out how much funding would be needed to be moved through them. And we worked together on that. So I am just aghast at the fact that all of these accusations are going out, and we can't even have a public forum to ask, okay, where is this coming from? So we can get the facts, but also everyone in our community can hear it. I think this should have remained a policy debate, but it has like gone far and out beyond this at this point. And I think also it is revisionist history to say that our Neighborhood Safety Department, having two commissioners over time, major staff turnover, not being able to execute contracts, going into a lawsuit is somehow the council not doing their work. No, the council doesn't get to determine the operations of a city department that falls squarely under the commissioner and the mayor of the city. Our job is oversight and budgeting, and currently, we're in an oversight process. Because a lawsuit for not being able to fulfill invoices correctly or have accountability measures is serious, okay? The county is not in a lawsuit, didn't have to do a settlement, the city of Minneapolis had to. And so I think it is absolutely a discussion that we should be having about moving to a different agency. And even if, even if there's no mal-intent in Neighborhood Safety not being able to do the work that they needed to do, because it's difficult work, there might be a capacity issue. There might be problems within the department with all the work that they have been forced to take on, especially following 2020, especially shifting from the Office of Violence Prevention to Neighborhood Safety Department. And we should question, okay, maybe we can just take this set of programming that needs to happen, that service providers that the county contracts with and the city contracts with need to serve our youth. That needs to happen, maybe we just take it out of our hands as the city of Minneapolis and bring it over to the county temporarily, so our house in the city of Minneapolis can be in order, so our Neighborhood Safety Department can be in order. I think that's a fair discussion to have, and that's where this started. But what it's termed to is inflamed statements, media, press conferences, misinformation that I would say is squarely put out by the Office of Community Safety Commissioner Todd Barnett, and we are trying to...
That's ascribing motivation right there. Come on, come on, get order here, show some leadership, Council President. Continue.
I won't ascribe it. I respect your... Okay, I respect what you said, so I will stop, how about that? All right, there you go. But I do think misinformation is going on, and that's what we're trying to get to the bottom of. Because it has inflamed this community and it has led threats that were pushed at council members.
Please, please.
What I perceive to be as a threat, if someone says, I'm not going to, I'm not going, I didn't hurt anybody, I didn't shoot anybody, however, I will if I have to, which is something that was said in a live video, and we have to reckon with that fact. That's a perceivable threat, and I'm not only speaking for myself, but I'm speaking for the public, because this is the people's chamber, and people deserve to feel safe when they come to City Hall. And that was not what happened on Monday, and that's not what's happening today. And I don't see us coming together as the city of Minneapolis, our city council, and our mayor's office, and our Office of Community Safety standing up to that, because that should have never happened, because this is a policy discussion. Misinformation and disinformation pushed out into the press that inflames people, encourages violence. We've seen that over and over again in our country. And I'm not going to stand for it and allow for it to happen here in the city of Minneapolis. And I apologize to the people of Minneapolis that this is even occurring. And I look to our leadership, I look to our mayor, I look to the commissioner of the Office of Community Safety to take some leadership here, take some accountability, and for us to find a way to reset, because this has just gotten way out of hand.
Councilmember Rosman.
Thank you so much, Council President. The conversation we're having is moving money to the county, and here's how we got here. We represent the city of Minneapolis and residents of Minneapolis. And if they're not getting the services they deserve, yes, we have the right to think about, where can we take those services that can be more effective? In my experience with Neighborhood Safety, has not been great. I believe this department has been inactive. They say it right here for the last couple of years, that they don't have the staff to do it. They are short of staff. There's a quote that says, "One staff or 100 contractors." So yes, we have a responsibility as leaders to take a step back and use our resources and resident taxes to make sure that we're providing the services residents deserve. We have passed many amendments and many budget markups for specific neighborhoods that are struggling with addiction and homelessness and safety. And those items, or budget items, are left behind and wait until the end of the year, and they go back on the general budget of funding. So, yes, I do want to thank Councilmember Wansley for her leadership, spending a lot of time trying to find an effective way to use resident taxes. And that's what we're debating. And I believe we have the right to do that. But people have said that we have not been threatened, I haven't heard threatened, I got threatened, I got threatened. I have no relationship, I have no idea. The referent, McAfee, that got here, he spoke, I listened to him. I have the right to talk to him, to make his calls, return his calls. But he has, I have no, nobody has no rights to threaten me or threaten my community. Yes, come out behind that camper and you'll see what happened. I will do you-know-what. Somali council member hates blacks. I can't hate my own. This division between African-American or Somali or any other community is not acceptable. I wanted to say that we're here to do the community work, and we should be protected, and we should not be threatened. But right now, the item front of us, I want to get back to that item front of us, is to move that money. Side conversation with Commissioner, and I appreciate him getting back to me. I was looking for the answer to say, if we move this $1.2 million to the county, how will that affect other programs that City Minneapolis is providing to the residents? That question has not been answered. And so, if this money will affect other programs like Minneapolis as program that are existing right now, it will be hard for me to vote on this item. But if we can get the number to how much money we can move, that it will not affect the services we're doing right now, then I will be willing to vote on that. But I have not received that answer. And we did ask publicly last meeting if that question could be answered, but we were told that it's not a public information, and there's no way to estimate that. So, yes, thank you, Council President, that's all for me today.
Councilmember Rainville.
I will not be voting for this today. This flies in the face of what our professional staff has done to add accountability and transparency to this unarmed safety program. The same accountability and transparency that we hold our police department to. Unfortunately, some of the vendors that have gotten money in the past were no longer selected to go forward. And that's why this is coming forward today. The public needs to know this is coming forward today because there are vendors that were not chosen that have gone in the past.
I think they're ascribing motives.
Our taxpayers deserve better. And as we move forward, I would like to give my word to the Reverend McAfee that I'll do what I can to work with our Public Safety Chair and Vice Chair to have you come and speak in the proper format at the proper time. Count on that. And remarks to someone, I mentioned the lawsuit. That lawsuit began because of the lack of accountability and transparency several years ago, had nothing to do with the current administration, that's the truth. And for my final remarks, I think it is important that we talk about safety for staff and for elected officials. And to build on what Councilmember Vitah said, the same meeting that she is threatened at, my family was threatened, I was threatened. People were willing to come over that dais at us. And not a word was spoken by any of you in sympathy to us. So I'm glad to see that you finally realized that elected officials should be safe in these chambers, in the people's chambers. So let's go forward and treat everybody the same, unlike what happened in the past to Councilmember Vitah and to myself and my family.
I will just say this, leadership does take your safety seriously. And we've made sure that there's precautions. And unfortunately, I wasn't in leadership at that time. Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Council President Payne. I kind of want to go back to some of the comments that were said because I need to make sure that my community hears that they matter and that in any instances, especially in the climate that we are in, where our LGBTQI+ community is under attack, that any form of homophobia, transphobia is unacceptable in the city of Minneapolis. Heterophobic little girl, I'll see you again, that's a promise. I have not hit nobody, I ain't shot nobody, however, I will if I have to. You know, for the longest time, I never wanted to come out the closet, and I'm gonna say it. I never wanted to come out the closet, and it took me after college to come out the closet. And I did... I'm gonna finish speaking. I never wanted to come out the closet. I told myself I was going to be straight my whole life. I told myself I was going to be straight my whole life because I was scared of the attacks that I would get. Getting bullied for being gay growing up, getting bullied for speaking like a little girl growing up. So yeah, when someone calls you a little girl and you're gay, that is homophobic, period. When someone uses the word heterophobic, heterophobic is not a thing. Heterophobic is not a thing, to be very clear, it is not a thing.
Please.
I'll see you again, that's a promise, that's a threat. I ain't shot nobody, however, I will shoot, I will if I have to. That is a threat. And, you know, and I'm gonna say it, because I feel like for the past two meetings, this is not being acknowledged. It has not been talked about, it is wrong, it is unacceptable, and I am proud to be gay. I am very proud to be gay. And I will keep on saying that, because I am proud to be gay. I'm gonna finish, I'm gonna finish. That needs to be acknowledged. The move today should have never gotten to this point. The move today was addressing mismanagement in a department. It is about addressing the department that has utterly failed our residents to keep them safe. This department has failed our residents, it has not kept them safe. It has not kept them safe. And the fact that it has gotten to a point where people are getting threats, where sexist language is being used and homophobic language is being used, that is not what this item was about. It was about transparency and it was about addressing the concerns of our community's members. Go outside every day. They will tell you that they people do not feel safe and that this department needs to get its act together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I I just wanted to state I I can't support this item today. You know, when we first stood this program up in 2018, I, along with many of my colleagues, said, before we start pouring all this money into this department, let's build the department so they have the capacity to do this work. And we are seeing the challenges of trying to fly an airplane while building it is creating all of these problems. And so from what I am understanding from the Commissioner, who is serving as the interim director at this point for the neighborhood safety, there have been several measures put in place to ensure accountability for this program, and I'm willing to trust our professional staff to do that work. So I can't support this item today.
Before I call on Councilmember or Council Vice President Chuck, I just wanted to remind folks, this is not a public comment, period. Please keep the peace in the crowd. Let us have this debate about an important policy issue before us. Council Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, earlier, after after my comments, there was a there was a question asked about whether the the facts that I was stating, just repeating words that had been publicly stated, were were somehow politically motivated. So I I want to start by saying that I know it is, one, a violation of the ethics code for a local official to engage in the conduct that has been alleged in the public and up here on the dais bias favoritism of of those who receive city contracts. And that, two, it is a violation of the ethics code to not promptly report that conduct. And I believe it is incredibly important for for members of of the public and this body to have a complete understanding of of whether there is any evidence that supports the very serious allegations that have been made. I have yet to see any evidence being provided to corroborate that that this action before the body is somehow motivated by council members having an issue with specific vendors that were chosen or not chosen. No evidence to corroborate such a thing, but if that were true, it is, it needs to be, there needs to be evidence provided to us so that we can then take the appropriate action here so that a member that has engaged in that type of conduct like recuses themselves from this vote here today. And I I continue to to just hear silence or no answers in in the face of of these questions. I will say that that when I'm receiving emails from constituents asking me to investigate a member of of this body, which which, to be clear, I don't have the authority to do, I I do feel though as an obligation that I have an obligation as a member and as an employee of the city to be as well informed in in making decisions and and to get to the bottom of of such of such a serious allegation. So if if I continue to see the the Commissioner not present any evidence that have been repeatedly made, then that I think should be stated publicly. I am, I am, I am going to just end by by saying that I think it's, you know, this is like incredibly important work. We have so many residents that rely on GVI and YGVI services. They have the the potential to save people's lives and 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 that is that is at its core, the preservation of that work is is what we're really talking about here. And and, you know, I I will say I'm I continue to be really disappointed that we have allegations being made about unnamed council members with engaging in inappropriate behavior without any evidence being provided, that on Monday, this body, while in committee, asked several times in several different ways whether whether we could get an accurate number of of the the contracts for GVI and YGVI, an accurate budget. And we were repeatedly told that there that these contracts were in the process of being negotiated. And then we come to find out later in the week that actually the the negotiations were complete, the contracts were ready, and that they had been actually submitted to the the council earlier in that day for a committee meeting that's coming up. So so those those questions that had clear answers were were just were not were unanswered. And I think that's incredibly troubling for a department that has that has been subject to a lot of scrutiny and rightfully so because of of systemic mismanagement and and structural issues in delivering its critical lines of service. Thank you, Mr. President.
First, I would like to reset the conversation around my Violence Prevention Funding Resolution that's before this body. Because since the budget meeting this past Monday, the conversation has devolved into everything except the root of the problem that this proposal is attempting to address. The Neighborhood Safety Department is not functional, and that dysfunction has simply put residents' safety at risk. In 2024, homicides decreased across the country while they increased here in Minneapolis. And I wish that weren't the case, but that is the reality. And the Neighborhood Safety Department has not produced any data on their outcomes for two years. And that should alarm every single person in this room, every single resident in our city, and anyone listening. And violence prevention programs like GVI have been able to reduce homicides by double-digit margins in cities across the country, and it actually used to do that here, too. Under Mayor Betsy Hodges, Minneapolis Violence Prevention Programs received national awards. But for the last two years, through two directors and two commissioners, we have received zero data on the efficacy of these programs at the city of Minneapolis. And National Violence Prevention Programs and organizations, one specifically, have scored us 39 out of 100 for our work. And this has been raised dozens of times with the Neighborhood Safety Department and the Office of Community Safety Leadership and with the mayor. And these conversations have happened in public, in various committees, and with several meetings with leadership all of last year and in this year. And Commissioner Barnett could have addressed these concerns at any time by providing evidence that his department could administer these programs effectively to keep our residents safe, but that did not happen. And I would not propose moving these programs to the county if there were that evidence that they were working well here at the city. And I asked the county for help in the shared interest of our public safety, in the shared interest of keeping our residents safe, and they were willing to assist. And rather than see this as a positive opportunity and an expression of our continued collaboration around this work, because this is not new, the administration chose to spread misinformation and alleged that the proposal was motivated by corruption on part of council members. And these false accusations by the administration was echoed by residents, and that led to anger, to confusion, and ultimately, it did lead to threats against some council members. And I, of course, feel very unsettled that the administration chose to spread false accusations about me and my colleagues and that those accusations escalated to a point where even death threats, death threats were made against some. And that said, this conversation has gotten completely out of control and is simply distracting from the current issue at hand, which is the continued failure of the Neighborhood Safety Department to correctly administer programs that keep our residents safe. And this conversation has also led to many more questions than answers. Several statements made by staff has illustrated a continued lack of transparency and just misinformation. As Council Vice President noted on Monday, Neighborhood Safety Department staff, they stated that the contracts were still in negotiation. But literally, by 11:00 a.m. that morning, they had already submitted our RCA to put those programs on a public committee agenda that's going to be taken up on Monday. Also, they said they couldn't disclose the amounts for those contracts. They had to put that amount in that RCA by 11:00 a.m. They could have disclosed that to us and they did not. Also, there were like obvious questions about budget transparency related to that. And staff shared for the first time for many of us that NSD's entire budget is not broken down by program. And this is concerning because we all know that they have no data to support how resources for programming should be distributed. And NSD has now also explained how they're going to transition clients working with current contractors over to not a new contractors, especially considering that they are at limited staff capacity. There's nine vacancies within this department, and one of those positions is the GVI and YGVI Program Manager. And most significant of all, NSD has still not articulated any metrics for for their goals for these programs and contracts. How many clients are they anticipating to serve? Indianapolis had a 34% reduction in homicides using GVI. I'm you, I'm sorry, I'm speaking. Is our goal the same percentage, lower or higher? Those are the metrics that we're simply asking for in the data, and we have not been given that. So I have had many conversations with my colleagues that's been expressing the debate up here. And while some of them have been made aware of these general problems with this department, some are catching up in real time. Also, it seems like the public, some members of our public are catching up in real time. And I do want to move at the speed of my colleagues. So with that, I am going to motion or ask my Council Vice President to withdraw her motion for approval. And then I'm going to make the motion, if you accept, to postpone indefinitely.
Mr. President, I'm happy to withdraw the motion to approve this item today.
Is there any objection to that? Council Vice President is withdrawing their motion. Councilmember Wonsley has moved to postpone indefinitely. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Is there any discussion on that motion? Councilmember Wonsley, did you want to speak to it?
Yes.
Further.
So just to give clarity about that motion, so what that means is this proposal in its current form is no longer on the table. But I want to ensure that the vendors who received these contracts that we were not told about, even though the administration had that information as of 11:00 a.m. of this Monday and did not provide that to us, and I'm pretty sure that was very intentional, we want to ensure that those vendors who have received those contracts have as much stability as possible to do their work effectively without fear of anything changing with their contracts. That said, I do continue or will continue to use my full oversight authority to continue bringing much needed scrutiny to the Neighborhood Safety Department as it relates to the administration of GVI and YGVI programs and the wide range of program, well, management and operational challenges that we've been experiencing. And when the YGVI and GVI contracts come to AO this coming Tuesday, I am working with Councilmember Chavez and council leadership to have those be referred to the committee of the whole so that the entire body can get answers to the many questions that have surfaced during this entire conversation and have the information that they need to make an informed decision about, do you truly feel confident that this this city, this department can actually effectively run these programs and keep our residents safe? Also, in Cal, I will be expecting NSD leadership to make presentations on their plans to run these programs and to be basically do your work. Do do your homework and show what metrics of success looks like for these programs because it has not been shown this entire two years, and there's been no data to affirm that. And I also want to be very clear that there is no robust, once again, specific data. Right now that we have that NSD has shown that these programs are keeping our residents safe. So by making this particular motion, it allows me and any other council member to explore our options for addressing any continued failure from this administration to keep our residents safe and to address any potential ongoing mismanagement of these programs. So with that, I will conclude.
Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll start by saying that I'll, you know, obviously support the motion. I hope that 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 we all will. But I did want to take a little bit of opportunity just to talk a little bit about why I think that this discussion is a valid discussion, not necessarily the way it's transpired up here on the dais, but why I think this this discussion is a valid one. First of all, I want to say that, you know, contrary to to some of my colleagues, who who I respect every single one of my colleagues, this is not about vendors who didn't get paid. This is not about specific vendors. It has to be said. Folks might not want to hear that, but it's not about that. This doesn't fly in the face of anything, right? There's no explicit accusations of former Director Nelson Brown of corruption, but I think that there is a recognition that things were not going well. There were questions. There were questions about the service delivery. There were questions about payments to vendors that were never fully addressed. And if there were valid reasons for them, they they were certainly elusive to council. There were questions about the fidelity to a model, any model, when it comes to delivering these services. And those questions were never fully addressed. I think it's really important for us to state that. And so if there were answers, if there were valid answers to those questions, then communication needed to be much more thorough than it was. And because it wasn't, you've got council members trying to solve problems that are really apparent and with no, seemingly no answer. I think it's also really important to address just a few other things. This move, and the reason that I supported it, would be a temporary move. I don't know that that was ever mentioned in this discussion, but it would be a temporary move. And and so and so I think that that's just really important for us to set context as we engage in, with all due respect, a lot of hyperbole up here. It's important that we keep in view what this motion was and what it wasn't. And this was not a permanent discarding of this service to the county. It never was. I think that the we have a we have a vacancy in the leadership of this department, right? All those outstanding questions that maybe that maybe had good answers that we never had access to. But regardless of whether they did or didn't, we then had the leadership of the department seek another opportunity, right? It's not an issue for folks to go seek other opportunities, but it is when you've got a department that is in such a uncertain state of things. And so we have we have emerging leadership within the department, right, that are new. I've been very impressed with the the new and emerging leadership in NSD. I've been very impressed with 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 Deputy Director Lakes and and others that we've seen give give presentations in front of us. But we've just got so many moving pieces and we've got so many questions, and we don't see a lot of communication. I think that it is not unreasonable for the council to say, let's take a little off your plate for a little while. That's that's my that's my view. A few things that I want to address that I I kind of didn't want to have to talk about, but I feel like is important to talk about, is that, you know, Reverend McAfee is a Northside leader. Reverend McAfee is going to speak his mind. We all know that. I hope we understand that, and I hope we know that. I'm somebody who's always going to be comfortable being yelled at by Reverend McAfee, even though I did come late to that that committee and and so I had to catch mine in the hall. But but but. But I will say that I trust Reverend McAfee's intentions, but none of us can deny the impact that some of your words had. I don't know if he's still in here. And so I think all that can be addressed, right? That I trust your heart, but my colleagues don't know you. And so the impact of our words, regardless of our intention, always have to be addressed and have to be taken up. And if folks do not want to level set, I respect it, right? If folks don't want to make amends, I respect it. Some of the things that folks are saying they feel are very real. But I hope that we can get to a point where we can understand each other. Because the solution can't be that community members, regardless of whether I agree with them or not, and we know that, I don't always agree with our good reverend here, but we can't get to a state where the solution is that community members just can't come and address us, right? We can't get to a place where it's only talk to us nice or don't talk to us at all. We're not always going to be talked too nice. I'm not always going to be, on the North Side, we're not always going to be talked too nice. But at the same time, when you make threats, when people feel that the impact of your words were homophobic, that they were sexist, that they were an attack, I think that me knowing your heart, I think that you're a big enough man to address it and lean into that criticism. And I think that we got to be big enough to lean into any criticisms we receive as well. With that, I'll say, look, there's a motion before us. I'm going to support it. But I also think it's important to just state that regardless of whether we took this vote or not, there are valid reasons to support a move to the county. There are valid reasons to oppose a move to the county. And I think that the way that the discussion is played out up here hasn't always been the most productive. Folks might get mad at me for always trying to play peacemaker, especially since I haven't always played that role on this council. But I think that it's important that if anything's going to get done, that there needs to be much more communication. People can't dig their heels in and say, I'm sick of them. I'm sick of that person. I'm sick of council. I'm sick of staff, so we're not talking. Because who the hell does that serve? It doesn't serve anyone for either side of the admin or council to dig in that way. Councilmember Wonsley rightfully recognized problems in this department and utilized her leadership to seek a resolution to that problem. I think that that should be commended. It shouldn't be disparaged. If it's not the fix, fair enough, right? If it's not the fix, fair enough. But the answer cannot be the status quo either. So with that, I'll be supporting this motion, and I hope the rest of my colleagues will as well.
I put myself in queue. I actually think that Councilmember Ellison addressed a lot of the thoughts that I had in his statements. But I mean, even at its most innocent, what's happened here is just a fundamental failure of a communication. I was actually able to spend time with Reverend McAfee on Friday night during a ride-along where we were walking through the actual work on the ground. And even just in that brief interaction, it was very clear that what he's hearing from the city is different than what we're hearing from the city as leaders of the city. And there's just a fundamental breakdown in how communication is happening. And that just can't work in an area where what's happening on the ground is dynamic. What's happening on the ground, we have some proven models here, but it's not always going to be a template that works in community, right? This is about relationships. This is about trust. This is about communication. And this entire debate on this dais has demonstrated a lack of trust, a lack of communication, a lack of healthy relationships. And we're not going to transform safety in our city in the absence of trust, communication, and connection with community. That's just not going to happen. And I think this also elevates a broader conversation as well around how we need to be moving forward with a culture of accountability in the city of Minneapolis. And our police department has been at the forefront of this conversation, not always in the best light. But we have treated the police department like they're on some island that has some sort of unique failure. No. They're the department that carries the guns. Their failure has life and death consequences. But that breakdown in trust, that breakdown in communication, that breakdown in connection to community, that persists throughout this institution. It is a demonstration of the failure of government broadly. And sure, MPD is really easy to put upon the wrong pedestal when it comes to those failures. But we actually have to look deeply on ourselves here in every department on these failures. This is not unique to MPD. And now it's just coming to light here in NSD that these failures exist. And we cannot have the response to naming failure be defensiveness and throwing around accusations. Had we had deeper communication throughout the last year on this topic, we would be in a different place right now. It's understandable why this chamber is packed with a bunch of frustrated people because y'all haven't been told the truth in the same way that we haven't been told the truth, because we're not in community with each other the way that we need to be. And so I'm really grateful to Councilmember Wonsley, not only for starting this debate through the action of moving money to the county, but also through the foresight of saying, there's some work that needs to happen to repair, and we're going to postpone this item so that we can do that repair. And so I'm very grateful for your leadership on that, Councilmember Wonsley. Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, President Payne. I really did not want to have to follow after you, but I feel like this is my one opportunity to get to speak to the item. First and foremost, I think that there, I agree with what you said about a lack of information given to everyone in this room, and I also think that there's a shared frustration. There's just genuinely a shared frustration. Like, what I heard on Monday is that our people are dying. And you're absolutely correct, and it breaks my heart. In my own ward, like yesterday morning, there was six incidents that happened. Someone in my ward got shot in the face, right? And that should have never happened. They were looking out into the alley, and they got shot in the face. There should have been violence intervention that was there. We should not see our young people not having productive places to go, where they're finding a way to build community through stealing cars and building clout with their friends. That's not okay. These young kids that I got an opportunity to learn about alongside Councilmember Payne or Council President Payne on our ride-along, I see my younger brother in them, right? They're just at the start of their life, trying to figure out what to do next, and they're at a point where they don't have these places where they're getting mentorship, where they have leaders to look up to, where they can see themselves in a future career. And it's very possible for us as a city of Minneapolis to help these young people, right? I know that folks here, and then folks in our police department, folks in community, folks at the county, know these kids by name. They know their parents. They know their grandmothers. They know where they live. They know the places where they hang out. It's very possible for us to address this situation. And YGVI as a model, as Councilmember Wonsley and others have named, has been really, really successful if executed well. And that's what this item is about. It is a fear that in our current system as a city, we will not be able to execute it well on behalf of our community. And that's what sounding the alarm about this is about. That's why we're debating moving it to Hennepin County. It was stated that Neighborhood Safety Department was not able to give us two years' worth of data. You shouldn't accept that. None of us should accept that. They should be able to give us the data and information to prove that things are being successful. A Star Tribune headline in August 2021 of 2024 was, "Amid Allegations of Illegal Practices, Minneapolis Will Start Auditing Violence Interrupters." That was August of 2024. It shouldn't have taken that long. I think that's something we can all agree on. It shouldn't take us coming to this moment to call that out and for us to move in action to say, we want to hand over nearly $1 million to another entity, but that's where we're at, right? Because we want GVI and YGVI to work. And that's why I was so supportive of this, because that ride-along showed to me, when I'm looking at a case file of a kid with 40 incidents that didn't need to happen, we're not looking at this with the urgency that we need to, and the system that we have in place isn't working. And that's not a reflection of any of the hard work I know that the new members of the Neighborhood Safety Department are trying to do. I think they're constantly working hard to catch up and build the plane as they're flying it. But there needs to be accountability with the fact that things haven't worked. And that's why we have a Commissioner of Public Safety. That's why we have a mayor, because their leadership as an executive is not only to direct the operations, but is to hold accountability for actions or inactions. And that's what I want to see here. My job, I don't get to control the operations, is to legislate, to budget, and to do oversight, and to discuss and communicate with you as a public what we're thinking about, and to make sure that service delivery happens for our young people and for our community. And it is also reliant on me making a commitment to keep on doing the work and keep on doing these ride-alongs and start showing up on the block and understanding better what's going on. Because I want kids in our city to have a future. I really, really do. And I really believe that we can change course and make a difference here. But I don't have the confidence, based off of two years' worth of evidence, that our current structure of Neighborhood Safety Department is going to change because a settlement agreement happened, and now there's a pinky promise that these contracts are all of a sudden going to work out. And that's why I felt it would be a more stable place to move it to the county that has robust auditing, that has much more staff, that has relationships already built with a lot of the folks that community is familiar with. I'm happy to support postponing today. I know that we're going to see next week the contracts that Neighborhood Safety Department has selected come before a committee. I will continue to ask questions to understand how they're actually going to execute it well. And again, it's not ascribing any disbelief that the people that are staffed currently to be able to do that work. I just think they're far too understaffed, and the accountability at the top of leadership hasn't been there to repair the issues that we've seen thus far. That's the end of my comments. I'm willing to figure out how we resolve issues together and find peace with one another. That's always my goal. And I hope we, as a body, can learn a lesson from this and figure out how this reshapes and resets our work. Again, I thank Councilmember Wonsley for calling the question on this and bringing this forward because it was a necessary discussion that we needed to have.
Councilmember Pomisano.
Mr. Chair, council can't hold itself above or outside the level of accountability and trust that it expects from the administration. I too appreciate Councilmember Ellison's words. We should have an equal and level playing field, and we need to work together to serve the community and our constituents. It is frustrating, even has been angering to me and others, that finally Neighborhood Safety Department is ready to move forward, finally ready to move forward with this new level of rigor. And many of my colleagues wanted to move backward into the past, go call up things from the past, when they are finally ready to move forward. How hard and demoralizing is that for our administration to try and push forward change? So yes, we have several new members of the Neighborhood Safety Department, some really committed ones, if you've seen their presentations, and those that are committed to continue the work that the former director did well. For those that didn't go and listen to the presentation at the last AEO meeting, listen to their presentation or listen to their presentation from last fall, where they said last fall that there would be new contracts in place starting April of 2025. It's on a slide from last fall we talked about this. Postpone to win. Let's just delete this from the agenda. I'll agree to postpone indefinitely today, but I appreciate you're just removing this. It was presented again, even last council meeting. The AEO meeting next time will have the approval of contracts, as Chair Wonsley of that committee said, she'll move it to Committee of the Whole. But I hope we will be moving forward with these because it demonstrates all of the new rigor and work that's been done through this process. Thank you.
Seeing no one left in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll on the postponement of item number four.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Pomisano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries. And before we move on to our next committee, I think we have all deserved a little bit of a recess here. Let's reset and come back in 10 minutes. Thank you. Colleagues, we are ready to return from recess. And Mr. Clerk, I'll ask you to call the roll to verify that we have a quorum.
Councilmember Cashman.
Present.
Councilmember Osmond.
Present.
Councilmember Rainville.
Present.
Councilmember Chavez.
Present.
Councilmember Ellison is absent. Councilmember Kosky.
Present.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Present.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Present.
Councilmember Pomisano.
Present.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Present.
Vice President Shugtai.
Present.
President Payne.
Present.
There are 12 members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. Our next order of business will be report from Business Housing and Zoning Committee, which will be given by that committee's chair, Councilmember Osmond.
Thank you, Mr. President. Business Housing and Zoning Committee is bringing forward 12 items. Item one is a liquor license application for Bar Harmony. This was sent without recommendation. Item two is approving a rental hall and extended hours license for 1893 at the historic Grain Belt Office. Item three is granting an appeal to Richard Hotzel for demolition at the property located at 3120 Washburn Avenue. Item four is granting an appeal at Greg Harris for a certificate of appropriateness for the property at 204 Fifth Avenue Southeast. Item five is approving three liquor license. Item six is approving three liquor license renewals. Item seven is approving a rental dwelling license reinstatement for Eric McLean for the property at 2008 21st Avenue North. Item eight is approving a 17 district revitalization grant agreement. Item nine is approving a neighborhood revitalization program for forgiveness loan to Marsaro Central LLC. Item 10 is approving additional 2025 housing tax credit for housing project at 2116 Nicholas Avenue South. Item 11 is a resolution approving hate crime prevention guidelines. And lastly, item 12, we have an extended hour license for Lowry Handy Stop. This item was sent forward without recommendation at the meeting. I will move approval for all of these items except the last item, item 12. Thank you, Council President.
Councilmember Osmond has moved approval of the report minus item number 12. Is there any discussion on the remainder of the items? Councilmember Rainville.
I would like to speak to item one and 12 when appropriate. Just for item one, I did work out the situation on when the entertainment would stop, and so I'm going to vote for this. Thank you.
Perfect.
Councilmember Vitak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to have a separate vote on item number three. Please.
Councilmember Vitak has asked for a separate vote on item number three. Is there any discussion on the remainder of the items? Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to uplift item number eight, the Great Streets Business District Support Grant Agreements. Super excited to see a couple of new projects being funded in the Uptown Commercial Corridor in this round, including the Farmers Market led by E. Styles Neighbors, as well as Uptown Association's arts and marketing campaigns centered at Lake and Hennepin. And I'm really looking forward to continuing to work with the community and business owners and associations on these really high-quality and promising Uptown revitalization strategies this year.
Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Ellison.
Just for clarity, item one was moved without approval, right? Do we have an affirmative motion for item one right now?
Oh, you moved to it, perfect. Just wanted to make sure that we were all. All right. Seeing no further discussion, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on all items except three and 12.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Pomisano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
Those items carry. Next, we will take up item number three. Councilmember Vitak, did you want to speak to that?
Yes. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say that I'm not going to be supporting this today. I'm not going to be supporting it only because I agree with the Heritage Preservation Commission's ruling to study this property a little bit more. This is an old church in my ward that is going to be demoed if this passes today. And the Heritage Preservation Commission had voted to spend a little more time trying to figure out this church's history, and I agree with that. I really do think that there's an opportunity for us to make sure that this particular building, which is very close, is actually the beginning of Victory Memorial Drive, a very historic part of my ward. I just heard back from a lot of residents who believe that this building is the beginning of really showcasing all of Victory Memorial Drive. And so I won't be supporting this today, and I hope that my colleagues would also join me in supporting the Heritage Preservation Commission and having a little more time for staff to look into the history of this property.
Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you. I wanted to speak to this item. It is a really important item for a number of reasons. And you know, this is one of those things that typically I would be, that I would welcome to leave up to aldermanic privilege and those types of things. But I think there's something really important about this project that is, or about this demo, that is, that I wanted to discuss. First of all, we do have sufficient grounds for the demolition, so I'm not going to speak to that. There is, you know, we're well within our right to grant this. Some things that are not maybe germane to the topic at hand, but I think are important, is that the church itself, who left this, this building, this facility, felt that affordable housing was in line with the mission of...
You told me I couldn't speak to that.
That was at council, that was at committee.
Right. It's not the issue at hand, though.
Am I out of bounds to speak on the intent of the church? Just, I'll ask the city attorney.
Council President Payne, Councilmembers Ellison and Vitak, while that specific issue is not germane to the, or while those considerations are not germane to the specific issue before the council today, which is a demo of historic resource, and there's a very clear standard
You know, I, assuming you with the appropriate caveat that it's not relevant to the decision at hand, I think it is okay to reference. It's really not relevant, though, for real. It's the demo.
Councilmember Ellison.
Well, I will, out of respect for Councilmember Vitah, I won't talk about the grander context of this building and the affordable housing. But I will say that we do have a legal right to move forward with this demo. And I do think that it is appropriate for this council. And I hope my colleagues will move forward with this demo. And I'll leave it at that.
Councilmember Osmond.
Yeah, I just want to add one, a couple very important note that this project has received public funding. It received $2,200,000 Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Councilmember Osmond, I think this is the.
I think it's just highlighting what's on the document. You know, I just want to remind the committee.
Sure.
Council President Payne, councilmembers, to tie this one up with a bow, the standard is a demo of historic resource. Historic resource in our preservation regulations is a property that is believed to have historic merit and meet at least one of the criteria. Staff evaluated this with in-depth research and determined that this property does not meet any of the criteria for landmark designation. Hence, the staff recommendation was to grant the demo. And so Councilmember Ellison is correct. The council is well within its legal bounds based on the evidence, the research and the facts in the record to approve the demo as it is teed up today before you.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Osmond.
No, just, thank you, that's it. They've just received a large amount of money.
Councilmember Kosky.
Thank you, Council President Payne. I just wondering if I could ask a few more questions. I heard what the city attorney just stated around what's in our authority right now. But I also am wanting to honor and just learn a little bit more from Councilmember Vitah in understanding what would be the, if this weren't to be approved today? And you know, she's requesting a little bit more time for the church to maybe gather these findings? Or can you just kind of help walk through? What would the process be if this weren't to pass today? And would they go through another appeal process, or?
Sure. Council President Payne, Councilmember Kosky. The historic resource designation, or that term as it's applied to buildings in the city, it's really a term that is used to dictate process. It's whether a demo gets approved administratively, or it has to go to the HPC for a public hearing process. So what it is, is when anyone applies for a demo permit in the city, the planning director reviews all demo permits and determines whether the building at issue is a historic resource. And again, it's a very cursory look by staff initially to determine whether they believe it has historic merit. And so it's a real, just initial glimpse. And so if they do that and they believe it does, they send it to the HPC to take a closer look at it. That's what was done here. So they, otherwise, they can approve it administratively over the counter. So they sent it to the HPC, and then that gave staff the time to do the research on all of the criteria, the potential criteria for designation, and to engage in that closer look, which they then put into the staff report that was presented at the HPC. So the staff recommended approval of the demo, that it did, this property does not meet any of those criteria. And so that's where we're at. The outcome when the HPC denies a demo of historic resource, and then assuming there's no appeal, the council with, sustains the denial of the demo, it sends it into a historic, a full-blown historic study that can take up to a year. And the property is placed under interim, it's called interim protection during that time. So it prevents alterations while it's being studied. Sort of, kind of freezes it essentially for a period of time.
And just a quick follow-up, if I, so, and but what we're finding is that there wouldn't be enough evidence to even go forward with that next step?
Yes, so.
To do that full-blown.
That's correct. So the code, the code actually words it in the, uses shall, not may. So it determines, it says if the, if the, you know, commission or the council, because we're on appeal, determines that a property is not a historic resource, the demo shall be approved. So there isn't even discretion. Now, again, it's, you have a staff recommendation on the one hand here to approve the demo. The HPC did the converse, and hence the appeal.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll on item number three.
Councilmember Cashman.
Just to clarify, Mr. Clerk, the affirmative vote is to grant the appeal and support the demolition.
Correct.
Thank you. Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Nay.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
No.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Nay.
Councilmember Pomisano.
No.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are nine ayes and four nays.
That carries, and the item is approved. Next, we will take up item number 12. And I will move to approve item number 12. It was forward without recommendation from committee. I was able to have an opportunity to speak with the business owner, go more in depth with MPD, and actually interact with some of the constituents who had brought their concerns forward. There was a little bit of miscommunication, I believe, between community, MPD, and owner. And what I am trying to do here is really solidify what our professional staff and the owner had agreed to. And the owner was very open and accepting of this, which is essentially, and I also want to thank Mr. Fussie for helping us get this in a much more formal document. But what the committee was considering was approval of a 24/7 license for, there's a number of these businesses that had been operating prior to the need of this license. And they're just, this owner's trying to get, and make sure that he's operating in a conformed way to the current licensing regime. And renewal will be up in May. And professional staff worked with that owner to have a little bit more of a heightened interaction to make sure that there aren't any issues, the types of issues that were raised by community. And if they did see some issues, they were going to work with that owner to get additional security. This amendment essentially reflects that. And it, I don't want to read it directly because it's pretty technical, but it simply states, if there was a use of a dangerous weapon or a shooting did happen on premises here, it would give our precinct inspector the ability to work with that owner to bring additional security measures. That owner has agreed to that condition. And I think that this helps balance out some of the concerns of the community and some of the concerns that my colleagues had raised on the biz committee, who wanted to see this move forward with approval. And with that, I will recognize Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, you know, had supported a motion in biz committee to actually require security from 12 to 5:00 AM at this business. And it was my understanding at the time that the business, the gas station, only wanted to leave their window open. So they were only selling gas during those hours, but to close their shop. And so can you explain how the 24/7 license, if that's allowing, you know, the full shop to be open, or just the window for a gas sale?
The amendment I'm bringing is not making any requirements one way or the other on that. And I think what the big concern that the owner had was the additional cost of security would change how he might need to operate during those hours. And so what this amendment does is it says, you know, if something were to happen, we would, we would want to put conditions of having those security costs on the business owner, but to give room and space for that to not have to be the case.
Okay. And then what is this incident, a public nuisance pursuant to the statute, unlawful use of a dangerous weapon? So if, if there is like a proven investigation of unlawful use of a weapon on site, then we have the authority to require security?
That's right. So I had had a discussion with the precinct inspector around giving him the discretion. And I think Councilmember Ellison had raised a concern that, you know, this, that could lead to maybe not the best outcomes if, you know, we couldn't verify what had happened. So this is going to be a more data-driven approach to say that if there's a verified incidence of this type of nuisance, then we would be able to put those types of conditions on and not have it be so open to interpretation.
Okay. And then finally, in the enhanced security measures that would be put pursuant to this condition, this is a pretty wordy motion before us, so. Thank you, Attorney Fussie, for that. It's a little, but it says that such review shall be conducted by municipal hearing officer. Who would be that municipal hearing officer?
Mr. Fussie, would you like to speak to that?
Council President Payne, councilmembers, Joel Fussie from the city attorney's office. Our ordinances already have in place a process which, in certain circumstances, can allow the council to impose conditions on a business license. However, that respects due process, and it provides our municipal hearing officers. So the hearing officers that we contract with to conduct most of our administrative citation and rental licensing appeals are able to develop a record on a question, a licensing question such as this. It's simply a recommendation that comes to the council, and the council has the full authority to make the final decision. So in this case, it provides, it would provide, if the security measures were deemed to be appropriate and triggered by a qualifying incident, it would still grant the licensee due process rights to appeal that and say that whether it's necessary or whether it should have been triggered in the first place. So the motion, council president's motion attempts to kind of balance a couple aspects and provide due process to the applicant, but also give greater flexibility to the city to impose some security conditions if they are warranted.
Thank you, Attorney Fussie and Mr. President. I just wanted to see, you know, this municipal hearing officer. So are you saying that that could be a combination of people at the city, including inspections team, citations team, and/or council committee?
Council president, councilmembers. The municipal hearing officer is simply the designated hearing officer that we contract with. Their attorneys, they've responded to an RFP, they've been screened by our office, and they're in place right now to hear various appeals throughout the city. Most of those deal with administrative citation appeals. So it's, it's just a forum in which a record can be made and a recommendation can be delivered to this council with regard to whether continued or any conditions would be appropriate if they were triggered.
Okay. Thank you. You know, I would expect that other council members, if I was trying to impose some conditions on a 24/7 gas station in my ward, which I have done in the biz committee as well, that, that they would kind of respect my process with the business owner and the police inspector and the attorneys to craft that. And so I'm going to grant Council President Payne the same respect for the work that he's done in managing this complicated issue and support this motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Rainville.
Thank you. I also respect what you've tried to do here, but I don't think it's gone far enough. I think it's too broad and too general. And I have many of the same friends, I don't have the same constituents because they're different wards, but I know a lot of people in that area. And this place has been raising hell for a couple of years. So I'm not going to vote for this because I think you're being too soft on them, Elliot. They're a source of livability problems, and they should be dealt with firmly. So that's why I vote no. But I respect your effort to try.
Appreciate that. Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you. First, I want to say you fielded a lot of my text messages and calls about this issue, and I really want to respect that. Similarly, I try not to be involved in issues that, and I'm doing it twice today, but try not to be involved in issues that are really like ward-based issues, right? We all kind of know our wards best. We know it's best to, how to handle the issues in our wards best. But you know, this was a situation in which, you know, staff, even our police department, our licensing staff, did not agree that the conditions that were being imposed were reasonable. And so, you know, I think that, you know, we got to, we got to be able to lean in. And, and I don't think it's soft to say, you know, that, that the business is, has a relationship with MPD, and that MPD feels confident that they can move forward without imposing a really pricey solution that ultimately won't result in, in my opinion, increased safety, but will ultimately result in the business having to likely shut down or keep its operations even more intrusively open overnight, as opposed to just having the window, which is their intention, not a license condition. But instead of just being able to have their window, they'd have to be open fully, possibly, if they could afford it at all. $80 an hour, $100 an hour, $120 an hour, five hours a night, 365 days. That is not a reasonable expense to impose on any business. And so I just, you know, it, when staff sort of raised their concerns, because I was content to just be like, not my ward. But when staff raised their concerns, it really did get me thinking on this issue a little bit more. And I think moving forward, we should be a little bit more diligent and thoughtful about what kind of expenses we're imposing on businesses, and whether or not they are workable solutions, and whether or not they're reasonable, or we're just going to make goods and services more expensive at that business or potentially destroy that business. I think we should be mindful of that. So that's all.
Councilmember Osmond.
Thank you. I think Councilmember Ellison kind of, I mentioned everything that I need to mention, but just to keep in mind that the item was to grant. But the condition was brought by Council President, Council Representative from the district to have a security. We discussed, the data wasn't supporting. The inspector from the district was okay with the way it was set up. So right now, what's front of us is something that all of us, I guess all parties agree. The owner, inspector, the council representative. So I think it's no-brainer to vote on this and move forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, President Payne. I am, I am also challenged by the motion being brought forth today by yourself. You know, I think that it, there has been challenges there. This motion says that if another challenge happens, then we can go in and talk to the owner. They can appeal that again, dragging out this process forever. To Councilmember Ellison's point, A, it's called the cost of doing business. But there is another option. They can close at midnight like most of the gross gas stations in the city do as well. There is no right to stay open 24 hours a day. You have to earn that right. And up to this point, this, this business has not demonstrated that they, they can do that without additional security. So I, I won't be supporting the motion today.
Councilmember Ellison.
Yeah, sorry. I didn't make it clear enough. I would be supporting this motion today. So I wanted to make it that clear. You know, the last motion, which was the five-hour imposing of security, you know, was something that I felt like we couldn't support. I feel like this is a great meet in the middle. And the business owner is informed, the business owner was not informed of the last one. Staff is informed. Look, I, with all due respect, I don't know what briefings you guys are reading from staff. MPD is not, and licensing are not affirming some of the stories that I'm hearing about this business. And I, and so I just want to make that clear that there's not like, it's not like we're being, we're being informed by our staff that the evidence supports shutting this business down. Surely, nobody has a right to be a 24-hour business. But I do think that both our staff and MPD think it's perfectly reasonable for this business to be 24 hours. You know, I don't know what this built, this, this business being shut down overnight really does. You know, if we get a different opinion from licensing, these conditions sort of make it really possible for us to track what's going on with that business. That's more than just hearsay, but actually gives us, gives us hard data from our, from our staff. I think that that's a reasonable compromise. And, you know, adding, adding an extra, you know, $130,000, $200,000 in operating costs annually, I don't know that that's just the cost of doing business. That, that feels pretty exorbitant to me for anybody. So, you know, all that being said, I'll be supporting this motion. And I will, and I, and I am going to be challenging myself to be a little bit more in tune with staff's recommendations and their reasoning for a lot of the conditions, or not, so that I could, so that we don't find ourselves just feeling like it's appropriate to impose whatever strict conditions we want, just because we sort of feel like it. It's got to be stat, data-driven. Amy Lingo, our MPD, they have done tremendous work to give us their recommendation. I think that obviously the council member of the area knows their constituents best. I think this is a really, really reasonable meeting in the middle. And, and, and this puts it, this puts the ball in the court of the business owner to show and prove. If he's really not an issue, that, this, this puts the ball in his court to prove that. If he's really not an issue, that this puts the ball in his court to prove that, as opposed to us assuming it or basing our restrictions on hearsay.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to clarify, just so I understand, even without this motion before us, it would be a vote on an extended hours operation license?
Correct. The underlying motion was forwarded without recommendation to provide the 24/7 operating license.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, I was in the biz committee, but it just, the way that the discussion took place and the votes took place, it kind of just kind of shifted where we were at. So that's a good clarification. For me today, I think it feels pretty clear, just based off of my best guess and the discussion we're having here, that extended hours operation license is very much likely to pass today. And I too was very concerned about the safety issues that Council President had brought forward and the discussion that we had. And so I supported forwarding this without recommendation. And I think this is a motion that would create a stopgap to address those safety issues. And without this motion, we wouldn't have that and an extended hours license most likely would pass. So for that reason, I think it's very prudent that we support this here today in order for there to be an intervention point and then kind of put the responsibility in the business. I personally don't think this is too soft. I think this is how you brought together all of the different stakeholders to come up with a solution to get at what your constituents need. So I'm happy to support this today.
Thank you for that. And just to ensure, I moved approval of this motion as amended. Is there a second? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Nay.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vita.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Nay.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes and two nays.
That carries and the full report is adopted. The next report is from our Climate and Infrastructure Committee, which will be presented by that committee's chair, Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Climate and Infrastructure Committee will be bringing, the Climate and Infrastructure has eight items that were brought to today's meeting, actually nine items. So number one is passage of an ordinance for the gas franchise agreement. Number two is in passage of an ordinance for the electric franchise agreement. Number three is authorizing MOUs with both CenterPoint Energy and Xcel Energy for the Clean Energy Partnership. Four is authorizing a subordinate funding agreement with the Metropolitan Council related to professional staff costs on the Blue Line Light Rail Extension Project. Item five, authorizing acquisition of a permanent utility easement related to the Upper Harbor Terminal Public Infrastructure. Six, authorizing submittal of a grant application to apply for the Municipal Investment Fund Planning Grant for geothermal planning. Seven, directing staff to conduct landscape review of policies designed to support property owners on expenses related to lateral water and sewer lines. Eight, directing staff to research and analyze nationwide special assessment assistant programs. Nine is the George Floyd Square concept layout, which the committee referred to the city clerk to be placed on file for further consideration. I will move approval of all items and also ask to pull out nine for a separate vote and discussion, so I can introduce the accompanying legislative directive.
Councilmember Cashman has moved approval of the report and asked to separate out number nine as a separate vote and discussion. Is there any discussion on the remainder of the items? Councilmember Kosky.
Thank you, Council President and colleagues. Before you, I just wanted to speak to item number seven quickly here, which is a staff direction that guides our Policy and Research Division to explore municipal programs and policies that provide support to property owners and mitigate the costs related to assessment, repair, and replacement of lateral sewer and water lines. Across the nation, cities are grappling with the escalating costs and logistical challenges of maintaining these critical underground pipes. Here in Minneapolis, our water infrastructure is aging with many pipes installed decades ago and nearing the end of their lifespan. At the same time, climate change is intensifying these pressures. I think even some of us on this dais have felt those even today. We have more storms, heavier rainfall, and increased flooding are stressing our infrastructure, leading to backups, overflows, and failures. Homeowners bear full responsibility for maintaining these pipes, which connect their homes to our public water and sewer systems. When a line fails, repairs can cost thousands, sometimes tens of thousands of dollars, a financial burden that can be overwhelming, even catastrophic, especially for lower-income families. The frequency of lateral line failures has surged in recent years and costs continue to rise. This is a growing issue that won't resolve itself, and it's critical that we take action to protect our residents and their financial security, as well as our city and its climate adaptability and resilience. There are a variety of policies and programs that we can consider, such as grants, low-interest loans, technical assistance, and even point-of-sale requirements that mandate inspections or repairs during home sales to prevent future costly failures. It's time for us to explore these options and identify the solutions that best meet the needs of our residents. This is about ensuring the financial stability of our residents while strengthening our city's resilience and adaptability. Why can I not say that word today? I'm going to skip over it. In the face of climate change, by acting now, we can reduce the burden of maintaining an aging, overstressed system on individual homeowners, safeguarding both their financial security and our city's capacity to thrive in an evolving climate. This proactive approach will help ensure Minneapolis remains a place where residents are financially secure and the city is prepared for the challenges ahead, laying a strong foundation for future generations. And I also just want to say a quick thank you. I'm imagining others are in queue for items one and two here with the franchise agreements. And I just quickly want to just commend our staff, the community, and our council members who were participating in this work. And I'm so grateful that we're going to be working through this today. So thank you so much for all that hard work.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Chair Payne. I wasn't queued to speak to item number nine, but I'll wait until that item is up for discussion. I do want to just acknowledge and thank our staff, all of the advocates who have been working for several years to bring forward this, these franchise agreements. It's been a tremendous amount of work and effort and really appreciate where we have gotten to up to this point.
Vice President Chugtai.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to speak to items one, two, and three, which are the franchise agreements with Xcel and CenterPoint, along with the memorandums of understanding related to the Clean Energy Partnership. This is my, I'm starting my fourth year representing this body on the city's Clean Energy Partnership and working with our utilities in the long-term effort that we are undertaking as a city, as a community, to build a more climate resilient city, to meet our city's stated and approved climate goals. And the work to, the work in the lead-up to and throughout the process of negotiating these agreements, which are, you know, a once-in-a-decade opportunity, has been tremendous. I wanted to especially thank residents in our city that are uniquely focused on this issue and are trying to work with their elected leaders here at the city to invest in and build a climate resilient city. And wanted to thank our staff in the Health Department in sustainability. I see Luke Hollenkamp here. I've had just the tremendous joy of getting to work with you over the last four years and have learned so much about how we are, as a city, doing everything in our power to lead by example and to build a city that our residents can live in and be safe in and breathe clean air in for generations to come. It is incredibly difficult and existential work. And I'm grateful for your leadership and your mentorship and all the things that you've taught me and will continue to in the coming years, hopefully, who knows. I also wanted to thank Jocelyn Bremer from our City Attorney's Office, who has done the detailed work of actually getting to a place where we have these agreements. Colleagues, you'll remember, we actually extended the expiration of these agreements by several months so that we could continue doing everything in our power as a city to ensure that these agreements were more in line with our stated policies than we were ready for at that time. And I think Jocelyn is someone who really listened to all of the different stakeholders within our enterprise and worked to ensure that our priorities were reflected in this document, in these documents. Of course, I will say that they're not perfect. I think that that speaks to the industry itself, right? It speaks to how difficult it is for any body of government, but in particular, local governments, to take on that work of building a resilient city, of holding our utilities, our utility providers accountable to our metrics, our goals, our residents' expectations and needs. And so, yeah, just wanted to make sure to uplift the work of all of our teams that have contributed, but the two of you in particular, thank you for all of your work.
Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I would just also like to speak on these agreements, which was one of the most, I think, time-consuming and really integrated policy efforts that I have made in my first year on the council. So really grateful for the chance to lead on this committee and to author and co-author with the council vice president the work that's before us today. She trained me a lot in how to be effective on the Clean Energy Partnership, so thank you for that. But, you know, I just want to say that we've had a Clean Energy Partnership for 10 years and when you look at the report from 2023, five out of seven metrics are still not being met. We have a long way to go and the Clean Energy Partnership should be more than a feel-good opportunity for the city and CenterPoint and Xcel to pat each other on the back for the work that we're doing, because we are not meeting our climate goals. We're not on track. And the purpose of renegotiating these agreements was to get us back on track and provide accountability and metrics that we could measure and hold ourselves accountable to in the coming years to try to address the fact that gas emissions in the city have not dropped in the last 10 years. And so that's a really big focus for me. And CenterPoint needs to find a clean heat source. We cannot keep heating our buildings with gas. The future is, does not include fossil fuels. So how are we going to get there? How are we going to assess our steps that we're getting to a fossil fuel-free future in Minneapolis? That's the work of the Clean Energy Partnership, but that's why the franchise agreements are so important. That's why the council vice president and I made our position on what we were demanding out of these agreements very clear over a year ago, or around a year ago. And so I'm really proud of how far we came, how far we got. I'm appreciative, I'm very appreciative of Attorney Bremer for listening to us, for working with us, for just setting the bar extremely high. And thank you, Luke, for really being a champion for this work. Thank you to MJ Carpio from my office, who became a Clean Energy lawyer in the past year to step up to the plate and to do this work, because this is about, you know, corporate accountability over two huge companies who do use our public right of way to provide energy to our citizens, but who our residents are asking for more from. We're asking them to be accountable to us, the ratepayers, the taxpayers, and to our future, so that our kids have somewhere to live and that Minneapolis can be a place where people can move from and continue to be a place where people continue to move to from all over the world to have a safe future. So really happy to have a piece of good news before us today, but just wanted to ground us in the work that's going to be coming ahead.
Seeing no one else in queue, oh, Councilmember Rainville.
Thank you. I see we have representatives from both the electric company and gas company here. I hope you don't walk away with thinking that we're treating you like villains. You are a partner in our energy supplies. It was very nice to wake up today to a warm house and to turn my light switch on when I got dressed. So we're going to work out these issues with you, but please do not take other remarks up here to, don't think that we're trying to disparage you. Thank you.
With that, I will ask the clerk to call the roll on items one through eight.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vita.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and those items are approved. Next, we will take up item number nine, and I will call on Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, Mr. President. So in our committee meeting last week, we voted to refer the George Floyd Square Open Concept to the clerk to keep it on file, so that none of the work that has been done to date gets lost. And today, I'm presenting a legislative directive to actually fully explore the pedestrian concept that was presented by Public Works as well. So this legislative directive is before you, and you'll see in the back of the packet the background and supplemental information prepared by Public Works, which outlines the Technical Analysis Agency and Interdepartmental Coordination, Concept Layout and Findings of Fact Report, and Community Engagement, Property Owner and Tenant Coordination, and Summary of Information on Other Pedestrian Malls that they'll be conducting over the next several months. So the directive seeks to evaluate the pedestrian mall concept layout per state statute and develop that language, which would run along Chicago Avenue just adjacent to 3744 Chicago Avenue, the People's Way. And this is related to the notice of introduction for the George Floyd Square Pedestrian Mall Ordinance, which I gave last council cycle and which we will take up the ordinance when this legislative directive with findings of fact is brought forward as per state statute. I just want to be very clear that the redevelopment of the People's Way is not impacted by this and will continue moving forward. I know four applicants are being evaluated to be granted sale of the building and will be given community presentations two weeks from now on February 26th from 5:00 to 8:30 PM at Sabathony Community Center. And by doing this today, we are listening to community members who continue to reach out about trying pedestrianization to the greatest extent possible. This gives our options, both the open, flexible, and pedestrian plaza, fair chances, and ensures that the concept layout that we end up approving is one that has been thoroughly explored and considered. Thank you.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Mr. President, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just want to make sure I caught the clarity of this. This is a combined or consolidated motion. We're moving the referral to city clerk to be placed on file and a legislative directive in one. Is that what I got? Councilmember Cashman.
I actually was hoping to move them separately, but if they're in the same item, I think we can just separate them out as well.
It's however you meant. I thought I heard you say, so I just wanted clarity on that. You're moving them separately.
I will move them both, yes.
Is there a second? Second. Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, President Payne. I'm not quite sure where to begin my comments, other than to say I can't support this. I see this as a delay in progress at George Floyd Square. There have been hundreds of hours of community engagement over the past four and a half There have been hundreds of hours of community engagement over the past four and a half Significant investment in community engagement, significant investment of staff time to, to come forward with a concept layout that was created in community. You know, we, we talk about a number of issues today, like the underlying pipes in our city that are failing and need to be replaced. That's an issue at 38th and Chicago. That's an issue that would be addressed by this infrastructure redevelopment. Not only would it restore those potentially failing pipes, but it would replace lead-based pipes that are harming our young people with more appropriate environmentally sound pipes that would not lead to further underdevelopment of our young people. It also just appears to me, and it's kind of humorous, I mean, we've seen on two occasions today, people deferring to the council member of the area. However, I am not being afforded that courtesy in this matter that I have been working with over the past four and a half years on this particular issue. I have been working at the intersection of 38th and Chicago for the past 25 years, redeveloping this intersection. And I can tell you flat out that no one is desirous of a pedestrian mall or pedestrian, I'm not sure what the other nomenclature is for this mall, but those concepts have been discussed. And people have overwhelmingly said, we want to move forward with the city's layout. So I can't support these motions today, and I will be voting no. Thank you.
Councilmember Kosky.
Thank you, Council President and colleagues. Today, we have the opportunity to take a meaningful step forward by approving the recommended concept layout for George Floyd Square, a plan that sets the foundation for future growth and collaboration. I see this layout as a canvas, a foundation that offers both structure and flexibility with room to shape and refine as our vision evolves. Like any great work in progress, it begins with a foundational layer but isn't finished. It leaves space for us to add layers, details and depth, gradually painting a more complete picture. This plan strikes the right balance between progress and flexibility, between taking decisive action and leaving room for future adjustments. It provides the opportunity to advance our work while continuing the critical process of engaging with the community and building support for pedestrian plaza or mall. While this layout provides a flexible foundation for us to build upon, I also recognize the path from this layout to a pedestrian plaza or mall is not a guarantee. I understand that my colleagues have reservations about that path. Many don't believe the mayor administration will follow through on a pedestrian plaza or mall. Given the mixed signals, calling this flexible while also insisting the plaza or mall will never happen, I can see why they feel that way. This debate isn't just about a layout, it's about trust. Trust that was broken, never rebuilt and remains absent from this process. Today, I will vote in support of the recommended concept layout and against putting it on hold, because I see this as an opportunity for us to keep moving forward. This concept layout allows us to take a meaningful step while also refining and shaping the future. But to be clear, if this is put on hold, I won't step away or disengage just because the outcome isn't what I wanted. I will lean in, continue working with my colleagues and stay committed to what I believe is our shared vision. I'm committed to ensuring the space reaches its full potential and, and should all commit to moving forward together, embracing the work ahead. This remains a space for all of us to shape, and the work of engagement and advocacy will continue as we build a future that reflects our collective values and vision. I am currently working with the administration to finalize a legislative directive to walk on to the Climate and Infrastructure Committee next cycle. This directive will ask the administration to develop a proposal for piloting the pedestrian plaza and mall models, giving business owners, neighbors, local organizations and the community at large the opportunity to experience them firsthand before making a final decision on the potential pedestrian mall ordinance. We need to be able to show visibly and tangibly the true potential of this space. Right now, many business owners and neighbors likely picture the autonomous zone when they think about a pedestrian plaza or mall, and that perception has undoubtedly shaped survey responses. But a pedestrian plaza or mall would be something entirely different, an intentional, well-designed space that serves both the community and local businesses. We have to bridge that gap, demonstrating what's possible so people can see the benefits firsthand. This is more than an infrastructure project. It's a space of deep significance, one that demands thoughtful planning and a vision that honors its meaning. George Floyd Square can and will be shaped by our collective ability to create a future that reflects the resilience, history and aspirations of this community. We have the opportunity to lay this foundation for something truly transformative. Let's take that step.
Seeing no one else in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll. And to again clarify, this would be referring the plan to the clerk and approving the legislative directive outlined by Councilmember Cashman.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
No.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vito.
No.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
No. And can I split my vote? An aye on the legislative directive.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Nay.
Councilmember Palmasano.
No.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are eight ayes. On the second piece of this legislative directive, there are nine ayes and three nays.
That item carries, and before we move on to the next committee report, I wanted to check in with colleagues. It's noon. Do we want to power through, or do people want a lunch break?
Power through.
Power through, all right. I will, the next report will be from the Committee of the Whole, which will be presented by that committee's chair, Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee of the Whole is bringing forward five items. Item number one is honorary resolution for Eric Nielsen. Item number two is approving a request to the city auditor for an after-action review related to the death of Allison Luscher. Item number three is a resolution authorizing litigation authority to the city attorney's office related to federal actions. Item number four is authorizing a contract amendment with Storm for their training services for police department officers. And item number five is authorizing a contract amendment with Storm for their training services to police department academy recruits. I'll move approval of all these items.
Councilmember Chavez has moved approval of the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Osmond.
Oh, thank you so much. Thank you, Council President. I wasn't, I was not at the committee meeting, but I do want to really take the time to thank our wonderful city attorney, Eric Nelson, for his work and his commitment for the city of Minneapolis. He's been super helpful to my office and since coming in 2020. So, sir, thank you so much. Enjoy your time over there, and hopefully you will have more time to spend time with your family, because it's, City, City of Minneapolis is a very, very busy place, and I can, I can see how handful our, all, all our staff are. So thank you.
Seeing no one else in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vito.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted.
Mr. President, I'm sorry to interrupt. Mr. Daler pointed out on the George Floyd Square item number nine from the Climate Infrastructure, I mispronounced the vote, so I just wanted to make sure to correct that. The first piece, which was the referral, was eight to five, but the second piece in the legislative directive was nine to four.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, for that clarification. We'll move on to our final report, which will be offered by our Public Health and Safety Committee, which will be presented by that committee's chair, Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Health and Safety Committee will be bringing seven items to Thursday's council meeting. Item number one is passage of a resolution accepting additional grant funds for the Minnesota Department of Health for the Public Health Response Sustainability Grant. Item number two is authorizing a memorandum of understanding between the Department of Veteran Affairs and the Police Department for inter-agency coordination. Item number three is authorizing a memorandum of understanding between Augsburg University and the Police Department. Item number four is authorizing a contract with the Minnesota Recovery Connection to implement the Public Health Regenerative Leadership Synergy Grant. Item number five is passage of a resolution authorizing and accepting a contract with City Match for the work on the Healthy Families Community-Based Health Initiative. Item number six is directing staff to research autonomous food delivery technology and its impact on workers. And lastly, item number seven is approving a legislative directive related to information about the administration's 2025 summer safety plans. I'll move approval of all these items.
Councilmember Chavez has moved approval of the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank the chair and vice chair for bringing item seven, which is a legislative directive related to information about the 2025 summer safety plan, and that will be coming back by April of this year. So this legislative directive really asks for a comprehensive overview of office of community safeties, plans and geographic breakdown of, of staffing for all the different layers of service in our comprehensive public safety and, you know, locations of canvassing and interruption efforts, confirmed hotspots, locations of mediations, all with data about what does happen in the summer. And I think it's really important for us to get prepared for summer of 2025, because year after year, we see crime levels really spike in certain places in our city, and we need to be proactive about that. And so having this information come back in April will help us make good decisions about how to do that. So thank you for the, the LD.
Seeing no one else in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vito.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Thank you, colleagues. That completes the reports of all of our standing committees. The next order of business is notice of ordinance introductions. We have several notices, which I'll read now. First, Councilmember Cashman gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the city council the subject matter of three ordinances amending the building, housing and water, stormwater and sewer codes, amending provisions related to water service and maintenance. Next, Councilmember Osmond gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the city council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the zoning code, correcting zoning map errors and inconsistencies. Osmond also gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the city council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the zoning code, correcting zoning code citations and inconsistencies and clarifying vague or confusing provisions. Councilmember Osmond also gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the city council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the zoning code, establishing flexibility for minimum building height requirements in certain built form districts to further promote the city's comprehensive plan goals. And finally, I am giving notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the city council the subject matter of an ordinance amending Title IX, Chapter 172 of the Minneapolis Code of Ordinances related to fire and police protection, police conduct oversight, amending provisions related to review panels to provide for temporary assignment of trained members of the Civil Rights Commission. Are there any questions on these notices? I'll recognize the clerk. Could you speak to that final notice?
Happy to, Mr. President. As you indicated at the beginning of the meeting, and I struggle to do, you had introduced earlier this year the subject matter of an ordinance in order to make many amendments to the ordinance which provides for the creation of the Community Commission on Police Oversight. And as this body is aware, the city is dealing with a fairly substantial backlog of cases that need review panels formed in order to consider those cases of alleged police misconduct that are brought forward. Under the ordinance, each of those review panels consists of five members. Three of them are civilians that are selected from the membership of the Community Commission on Police Oversight, with two members from the Police Department who serve at the, at the rank of lieutenant or higher. However, we have some vacancies on the Community Commission on Police Oversight, as this body is aware. We'll be working to fill those vacancies in our open appointments process in the month of March. Pending that, in order to keep those review panels going, a short-term solution brought forward by our new director of civil rights, Michelle Phillips, was to consider using members of the Civil Rights Commission, who could be trained and qualified to serve on those review panels for a limited period of time. So this very specific ordinance amendment would allow for members who are trained and meet the qualifications to serve on those review panels to be designated as members of the review panels in addition to the members of the CCPO through, I think the extension is through the end of this year, December 31st, 2025, and then it would end and we would go back to just the members of the, appointed to the Community Commission on Police Oversight.
You should all know, this did not come before the CCPO. To come here and to find this out is outrageous. Outrageous.
Stacey, please, thank you. Those notices are hereby given, and no, no further action is required at this time. The next order of business is the introduction and referral calendar. We have one introduction today, which is from Councilmember Cashman introducing the subject matter of an ordinance amending the streets and sidewalk code, amending provisions to allow for the creation of a George Floyd Square pedestrian mall as part of the 38th Street and Chicago Avenue reconstruction project. A state statute requires that findings of fact are drafted prior to the first reading of an ordinance. I will move today to postpone introduction and first reading of this ordinance to our meeting scheduled for February 27th. I may have a second.
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 Is there any discussion on the motion to postpone? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vito.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and this introduction has been postponed to February 27th. The next order of business is motions. Councilmember Jenkins gave notice at our last meeting of her intent to discharge from the Climate and Infrastructure Committee consideration of the concept layout approval and easements for the 38th Street and Chicago Avenue George Floyd Square project. Since her notice, this item has been referred out of the Climate and Infrastructure Committee, and it was dealt with earlier in today's agenda under the, under that committee's report. As a result, further consideration of this item is unnecessary, and it will be deleted from the agenda. The next order of business is announcements. Are there any announcements from council members? Councilmember Palmasano.
Mr. Chair, I want to acknowledge that we had a large water main break in Ward 13 this morning at 50th and Penn, in a commercial corridor in a very busy intersection of our city. I received word of this just before 6:00 a.m., after so many departments had already swooped into action. In speaking with business owners and residents, this break comes at the worst time and temperature here of the year, but seeing the city coordinated response has been really impressive. They talked about, the, the small business owners talked about that specifically. Seapad. Our Public Works Director, Tim Sexton, was out there immediately walking, um, into the building and with the business owners. A couple of those business owners of flower shop and some restaurants have Valentine's Day as their busiest revenue night of the year, day of the year. Um, so I wanted to just take an opportunity to personally thank city staff for their response. Fire crews were on the scene immediately with Public Works water shortly after. The Fire Department literally was trying to help a senior citizen remove her car at four AM from the adjacent alley, not successfully, but an honest attempt and probably not realizing that's the same person devastated as she owned the bookstore that was clear underwater in the building just down the street. A few residents have needed evacuation. There are ten valves to shut off this large main. One of them was paved over. Um, but due to the frost line, the water, as it does, moved in strange ways and has deeply impacted this old building. It's going to be a huge amount of ice over many blocks and the Water Department is already trying to, um, make sure that they're keeping drains open and moving it so that it doesn't cause even more damage. Public Works had to cancel all their other jobs today and have sent every possible crew member to the scene to help, um, to keep drains open and et cetera. We're going to be dealing with the effects of this specific water break for a long time. And our locally-owned stores like Broder's and Territo and the bookstore and the coffee shop and, um, and I'm sure that our immediate response will be to help mitigate the severity of those impacts, um, to those stores and especially the residents that lived above it. So, um, I wanted to acknowledge that and thank staff this morning, all of the different departments that have had a very coordinated response to help a pretty terrible situation. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Palmas, Palmasano. Uh, I'll recognize Mr. Clerk.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to note the passing of Lyle Schwartzkopf, a true local legend, who spent most of his life serving the city of Minneapolis. As I'm sure most of you are aware, he died January thirtieth at just ninety-four years young. I had the privilege of knowing and working with Mr. Schwartzkopf over the past decade or so. Members will remember that in May of 2023, this council passed a resolution designating Mr. Schwartzkopf as City Clerk Emeritus, an honor that recognized his long and distinguished service to the city of Minneapolis. Among other things, he represented the city as a member of the Minnesota House of Representatives before being appointed City Clerk in nineteen seventy-two. He was the sixteenth person to serve in that office and he served as City Clerk for fifteen years. During that time, he's the only person in the city's history who consecutively, or concurrently, I should say concurrently, held the office of City Clerk, City Coordinator and Director of Intergovernmental Relations. I can't imagine holding all three of those jobs today. He went on, as I mentioned, to be City Coordinator, which is how he capped his career here at the city, which, as you know, was the principal staff officer responsible to the mayor and the council for the entire city enterprise. In retirement, he served on the Charter Commission for multiple terms, during which time the Charter Commission assumed responsibility for redistricting the city's wards and park districts, and he was part of two redistricting efforts. He also was part of that body when it brought forward and passed the 2013 Plain Language Revision of the Entire Charter, a fifteen-year effort in total, and the 2021 Government Structure Amendment. He served as an election judge for many decades, including as the head judge of his home precinct. He was, as the saying goes, a gentleman and a scholar, a friend to many, a tireless advocate for good government and a dedicated public servant who spent his life in service to his country. He was a military officer, his community and his family. Godspeed, Lyle Schwartzkopf. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Uh, Councilmember Kosky.
Thank you, Council President Payne. I just wanted to note for colleagues, there is an event this weekend at Lake Nacomas. It is a snowshoe shuffle for our Minneapolis Police Department and their health and wellness. And it is from nine to one PM on Lake Nacomas. Thanks.
Seeing no one else in queue, that completes all items on the agenda and seeing no further business before us, this meeting is adjourned.